One nation, under God, in the physical of liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have public participation. In accordance with bylaws nine zero one one, we invite public participation. We've allotted a total of three minutes. Each community member is allowed two minutes. I'm his caretaker, the timer again. When you come up, you state your full name and address. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment?
I will. Sit this time. Eileen Weinsteiger, Goshen Hill Road. I'm here tonight to respond to the two comments that were made. Under a breath or on record, I'm not really sure. But there was a comment made that there are some people who seem to know what the proposed budget was already. Those comments were an insult to me and my due diligence as a taxpayer that reads all or most public minutes with all boards and commissions in this town. I don't need anybody to tell me my thoughts, and I do the best that I can to read, understand what is published out there, and make a decision on my own. I stated that I would not vote yes for the budget. Did I say the Board of Education budget? I did not. I am not opposed to all of the Board of Education proposals that were put place that you referred to. I would like to see a reduction in the increase. There were some things that I've read that I felt with reading minutes that weren't completely transparent. One set of minutes, for example, talked about fixing the track, and then the next minutes talked about replacing with the high numbers. And I guess I don't understand like what happened or how it happened. I've read all the minutes from all the Board of Education subcommittee since September. After counting the word increase, it referred to a lot of increases, and that's why I said no.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Well, thank all of you, first of all, for serving the town, Board of Ed. We're in the habit of focusing on the schools while the rest...
The video, can you please state your full name and...
I'm sorry, Bruce Caleb, Lebanon, Leonard Bridge Road.
Thank you.
We are in the habit of focusing on the needs of the schools while the rest of the needs of the town are being put off. Are you aware that we spend an incredible eighty percent of our taxes on schools? While that commitment is commendable for the benefit of education, it must have its limits. Liz Sharon once said the town budget is like a balancing act, and we are out of balance and it needs to change. The biggest driver of the budget, as you know, is salaries and benefits, and that's where we have the biggest, the largest opportunity to make a change. Larger class sizes can significantly reduce the budget. In light of these potential cost savings, the Board of Ed needs to change its commitment to the... From the more expensive model of smaller class sizes. Smaller class sizes are a luxury and not a necessity. More money does not equal a better education. The whole world pays less than we do on education, yet they get better test scores. There's more to it than just the money. The Board of Finance asked all boards to come in with a flat budget that is no increase because this will be a difficult year due to reduced revenue and increased costs. This proposed budget, this proposed increase is forty percent higher than the incredible increase last year of almost one million dollars for a total of one point four million. Instead of no increase, all of you now have the choice if you want to do just the opposite. If you approve of this proposed budget, you are acting in complete disregard for the many other needs of our town.
I have two minutes.
Finance should respond to your request in like manner.
Thank you. Don't forget to say your full name and your address, please.
Matthew L. Smith, three thirty-six Babcock Hill Road, Lebanon, Connecticut. All I'm going to say, short and sweet. I'm asking the Republicans on this board to vote this budget down. This is ridiculous increase. It's over the top. It's going to increase my tax bill another seven hundred dollars again this year. This is ridiculous, and we cannot tolerate this in this town. You want to know why people are moving into this town? It's getting too damn expensive.
Would you like to speak next? We do have a written...
I'll speak. May I?
Yes, please.
Gar Weinsteiger, five thirty-three Goshen Hill Road. So, I'm not completely in touch with the Board of Ed. Lived here a long time, pay a lot of taxes. One thing I have taken away is, year after year, it costs more and more money to supposedly run the schools. I've worked in corporate America most of my life. I've had years where we've taken pay cuts, no increases, yet we were still able to hold everybody together. I don't believe that adding taxpayers' hard-earned dollars is the solution. And I think administratively, we should be looking at waste, eliminating waste. There's a lot of ways to do it. There's events, five S, Kaizen. Yeah, it's painful. People lose their jobs. But if everybody's not rowing the boat in the same direction, then that's not the answer. I ask this board to take a hard look at what's really going on, and I propose a zero percent increase, which would be very well received with the town. That's all I got.
Kevin Switler, four nineteen, Levita Road. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody here. You know, Boards of Ed, all the boards in this town. From where I sit, you know, everybody's a volunteer and they're trying to do their best. So, it is greatly, greatly appreciated. Sometimes when you get into these meetings here, I... You're voted in, and I've heard other boards and chairs said, "I'm voted in for my opinion." Not for political affiliation, for my opinion. So, that's what you're voted in for, your opinion. That being said, I think that, you know, a zero percent... I got the letter, too, from my department. You know, even, you know, a straight-line cost of living increase, I think is between three point three, three percent in that area. I think at the last meeting on last Tuesday, that number was brought up. Your job is, you know, it's a tough job just to find the balance. So, again, I thank you for what you do. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat. You know, I do ask you to vote your heart. I do ask you, you guys put in the hours. You guys have your subcommittees that go through all of this. You know, you're applauded. You don't hear it enough. I do thank you, and hopefully we move on, and we bring it before the whole town. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to because I'm not a resident of Lebanon, but am I allowed to comment? I'm a teacher here.
You have, you are a constituent, yes.
Zachary Johnson, I am a resident in Norwich, but I am a teacher at Lyman Memorial and the LEA co-president. I've watched every Board of Ed meeting since being elected president, and I would first like to commend you for the efforts that you put into it towards these meetings. I know that there are meetings upon meetings, and being a teacher here, I also am joined of meetings upon meetings upon meetings. The superintendent's proposal for our budget comes at costly cuts to members of our union and our teaching staff. And although this is unfortunate, we know with the rising costs that sometimes, like Mr. Gonzalez said, that there is unavoidable cuts that need to come with the rising costs that come around running a school district. I'm here to ask you to approve tonight's budget because I believe that we will lose more incredibly valuable staff members if we do not. Every member of this community runs a brick which holds this entire school community afloat. I, myself, just came from working on the set for the musical for three hours to come to speak and to just take notes, and every member of the school community puts in an amount of effort like that every single day. A person cut is a spark for a student that might not be there next year, or a personnel that does an invaluable job. And although I know that it costs taxpayer dollars, I think that the investment that school is becomes exponentially great, that sometimes we lose sight. And I'm just here to remind you of that exponential growth that we see in students, and that it's fueled by our teachers, our staff, and our materials and curriculum that we put into this. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? We did receive a written comment that was asked to be read, and it's from Carrie Schwartz, eighty-three Levita Road. After viewing last week's meeting and the public comment, I would like to voice that I believe the BOE should pass the budget proposed by Superintendent Gonzalez and the Finance Subcommittee. It seems as though the committee has cut as much as it can, and the amount and approval should now be put on the Board of Finance and the town. Too many times, our schools get amounts that barely allow them to function. More cuts would be an even bigger disservice to our students. Last request for further comment. It is only for community members right now. So, if you would like to comment as a community member, you can do that, but you'd have to go and state that you're commenting as a community member, not as a board member.
Are we going to have a discussion among ourselves for the vote?
It is the agenda item.
Okay, I'll contribute then. Thank you.
May I make a rebuttal to the last statement?
Nope. Next, we move on to Act on Twenty Twenty Five, Twenty Twenty Six Operating Budget. The motion to postpone has been satisfied. Now, we return to the main motion. As a reminder, the main motion, motion by Nicole, seconded by Sarah, is to approve the Twenty Twenty Five, Twenty Twenty Six Proposed Budget at six point four two percent increase. We're now at the point of discussion of the main motion.
Am I going to be timed for two minutes?
Please be respectful. That is the public comment.
Absolutely, I will be. I'd like to make several points, though. As a teacher for thirty-seven years, and devoting many years into education, including my degree studies, I wholeheartedly value education, a good education for our students. However, as a team leader and working with my principals and superintendents in my other school, I'm familiar with the budget process. I'm familiar with the union process as Secretary of our Union, and I know a lot of ins and outs of budgets, and I understand how difficult it can be. However, I'm not here to vote for Sherri Masterson. I'm here to vote for the constituents that voted me to be here to represent them. And these are our taxpayers. These are tough times with the inflation, and who knows what's coming down the pike. And I feel that my job, my responsibility to my constituents, is to find a balance between what we need to do for our students, what we need to do for our taxpayers, because one does not operate without the other. Somebody said to me, "If we keep raising the taxes to support a school system that already gets, in many people's opinion, many millions of dollars, then are we going to look like..." And knowing that many people are leaving Connecticut because it's an expensive state to live in, are we going to look like those people in Gaza, leaving their town because they can't afford it? How does that, how does that translate to being good to our students, or caring about our students' futures? Especially if they want to raise their own families here at a later date. I love teaching. I respect teachers. I respect the educational process. But I'm not here to just vote as a teacher who loves education. I'm here to represent the taxpayers and the students. They both have needs, and we need to balance that. And maybe the best way we can balance it, at least as a group, is to show that we really care about doing our very best in trimming our budget. So, I'm going to vote no on the budget, and it's not because I don't care about our students or education. It's because I'm trying to find a balance and represent that balance, not only for our students but for our taxpayers. That's pretty much it. Thank you. Oh, may I just add one more thing?
Yes.
And you know what? That doesn't just apply to me, Sherri, as a Republican. I believe what I just said applies to each and every one of us, because we're going to go down in record. And I hate to say this, but there's a, there's a growing acknowledgement and recognition that the board, our reputation is, we spend money like a bunch of drunken sailors. Do we want that for ourselves? How much better it would be if we go back to the table and diligently try ways to trim the budget. And the number of very small tiny classes we have in the high school, not, not in the little kid, not in the elementary school, in the high school, it's a pretty independent. Those, all those classes of low-numbered classes, that astonishes me, and I think that would be a good place to cut. And the last thing I want to say is, at the beginning of the school year, my understanding was that the state of Connecticut was short either between two, twenty-five hundred teachers or twenty-seven hundred teachers. Severe shortage. If somebody here does not like their salary, this is a great opportunity for them to apply in another higher-paying district, and I can assure you, they probably would be hired on the spot if money is all they care about. Personally, I think this is a wonderful school system, and if I were here teaching, I would rather stay here with a lower pay, honestly, than to go to another school's district. But that is an option, if they really care about more money. I think that's pretty much it, and I hope that you all vote with that balance that we are responsible for. We're not cutting the budget, totally. Let's trim it.
Nicole.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to say something in response to your comment last week, Sherri, about the Lyman class sizes. I have a problem when people just choose things from the class schedule and just report on that. So, I would like to report the correct information, which you did not include, and that is, we asked you specifically, which classes are you talking about? And you said all of them. Okay, let's talk about all of them. English, period five, twenty-five kids. English, period six, twenty kids. English, period eight, twenty-eight kids. I can go on. We can talk about algebra, that's got twenty kids. We can talk about another class here, phys ed, that has twenty-four, twenty-five kids. We can look at the history as well. Social studies, that talks about twenty-four, twenty-five kids. So, when you say class sizes of fourteen, are you talking about the specialized classes? Because I know you're not talking about the content area classes.
Are you asking me this?
It's my turn. So, when you're talking about trimming this budget, which classes are you planning on cutting? Because I've been on this Board of Ed since two thousand fifteen, and I've watched the Board of Ed cut, 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 because they weren't giving enough money from the Board of Finance. And I'm sure every parent in this town would argue what you're saying. And being disrespectful to this lovely teacher that just came and spoke about all the wonderful things that happens in Lebanon, which I fully support. So, a six point four two percent budget is just enough for this town to function its schools. If you cut any more, you're going to cut teachers, really good teachers. You're going to cut programs that these kids need to advance on. So, for you to say that we should trim this budget, that is actually a slap in the face to every single kid in this district. And if you really feel that you really love this town, then you're not working hard for these kids on the Board of Ed. That's all I have to say.
May I address a couple of things you said?
Can I check with any other board member? I don't want this to become a conversation between only two board members. Any other board member would like to make comment at the moment. Sarah.
Is it possible we can ask our members of the audience to refrain from using profanity while board members are speaking?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I can, I'm close. I would just like to demand the respect that I think that Board of Education members deserve, also that our students deserve, and that our teachers deserve. Every staff member that works here deserves it. I am also an educator, don't make a lot of money, but I need money. I need it. I need it to feed my family. All of these teachers need it to feed their families. Our parents have families. They deserve to be able to feed their families, too. There has been inflation. Yes, our increases, they have gone up. Our, every year, our budget does need to increase based on the inflation alone. If you cannot see that, I, I don't know where you're living. I'm sorry that we have to increase the budget. It is not what I want to do. I know I don't want my taxes to go up. I've got expenses just like everybody else. But to ask a teacher to stay and earn less of a salary, but putting everything out there, their heart and soul into their position, and asking them to, to earn less money or go somewhere else? That is the opposite of what I have been on this Board of Education for since two thousand seventeen. Opposite reason why I went into education, why I want to affect families and students in a positive way. Students in Lebanon deserve it. I know we don't live in fancy Glastonbury. I'm not expecting Glastonbury taxes or increases that look like Derg A, B, C, and D. But I do expect a respectful Derg F, because that's where we're at. And let's talk about those school districts and what their per pupil expenditure is. I think it is a very valid point. Let's look at them. Another thing I just, I do also just want to say, Sherri, respectfully, if you want to cut the budget, let's talk about the line items now. If we have questions about the line items on the board, we can't just be speaking globally. We need a decrease, we need a decrease, we need a decrease. Well, where? Where specifically? Let's pick out the line items, and let's talk about those and hash those out now, because that's what we're here to do. We're here to look at this budget in depth, take the recommendation from the, from the Subcommittee. Tell me if I need to stop, Dawn, and I'm happy to. But I do feel like this is our job, instead of just a global, we need to reduce. Now, tell me the line item that we need to reduce, and let's have a conversation about it.
Okay. Between you and Nicole, you've thrown a lot of accusations to me, but first and foremost, I want to say that I have the greatest respect for our teachers. I think our school system shines. I really do. And for you to say it was a slap in the face, because I have a different opinion from where I'm sitting, is an insult to me. I would never consider slapping another colleague. And I consider you a colleague because you, you're in the trenches. I was in the trenches. I understand perfectly. I really, really do. And I'm sorry if you thought I was giving you a slap in the face. That was not my intention. Nicole, you brought up a lot of, well, not even a lot, not as many as I did, school class sizes. And yes, there are a few, maybe, I don't know, ten, I'm guessing, between the middle school and the high school. The list that I gave at the last meeting was much, much, much more extensive, and included classes of one, two, three, four, up to fifteen, and then we had, you know, a handful of classes that were twenty-five, and certainly in PE, I would think it would be. In art, that was another area, and also in music. Those classes were fuller. I'm concerned about a class of three, or a class of four, or five classes of two, or seven. And, and I don't have those figures in front of me, but I think what I said got my point across. And there's another point I'd like to make, Nicole, as a colleague of sorts to you, too. At the last meeting, you said, "Well, kids are different today. We need the small classes." Small classes are wonderful, but, you know what? When you said that, I, I shuddered, because kids are kids. And as a teacher who has taught ten years of five classes, five days a week, with thirty kids, I will tell you this, and I hope that, because you are a teacher, I hope it helps, and maybe it will help you understand that kids are kids. Here's what they need, three things. They need clear expectations from the teacher, right from the first day. They need clear consequences to understand the consequences. And they need a teacher that believes in them and shows each and every kid the dignity that they deserve. And I will tell you what, after having many classes of thirty, that's the secret. You can have a wonderful time with your students. Do you think I would have put up with thirty years, ten years, of five classes every day, that's a hundred and fifty kids a week, if I didn't find joy in teaching? But I did depend on those three things. Clear expectations right from day one, clear consequences, and you have to follow through. You can't, you know, say, "Oh, I'm going to..." You're going to have to stay for detention if you do that. If they break the expectation, you have to follow through with the consequence. And then you also have to do it with dignity and respect. And if you do that, it makes for happy kids, and it makes for a happy teacher, and I'll tell you why. Because kids are kids, and all kids need to know, someone is at the helm, someone is at the driver's wheel, bringing them through the curriculum. They don't want to be lost at sea, not knowing what is expected and what they need to do. I would tell my, my students on day one, "I am here to spoon out the curriculum in a hundred and eighty days so that you can pass on to the next grade level." And my job is to break it down day by day, week by week, so that we meet that goal. They respected me for that. That was my job. And I would tell them, "If we get done what we need to do today, or we finished all that we need to do for this week, there will be no homework, not for that night, or for the weekend, or for our Christmas vacation." And they respected that back to me, and that's why I was able to manage thirty kids. Do I think that's ideal? No. I danced in the hall along with my students when we had classes of twenty or twenty-two. That's it.
Brian.
So, I appreciate the spirit, all that we've had here the last couple of weeks. And as someone that hasn't spent, spent as much time as some of other, the other folks that have spoken, just a couple of things from, from my perspective. One of the things over the last, particularly the last year, probably eighteen months, I would say, and maybe even two years, that I, I've been proud of since being on the board, is the board really working towards keeping down, trying to find that happy medium, if there is such a thing, between being the lowest district within our peer group as far as pay rates go for teachers, par educators, you know, et al., you know, nurses, and a... and a respectable increase that was, for the most part, at the time, under the cost of living increases. And I, I think the board as a, as a whole really did a tough job. I think the, the various unions worked well with the board and, and with the superintendent and the negotiating committee to, to keep that down. And about, you know, four, and don't quote me on it, but four and a, almost four and a half-ish percent of the budget is a little over two percent in the wages and then the, the other two, two and a quarter, two point two, something like that in healthcare increases. The healthcare side, you know, again, I think did a decent job zigging and zagging. We had a choice to lock in at eleven percent or wait to see if it went lower. Thankfully, we did, because it actually, I believe, went to fourteen as far as what we were able to have. So that, that saved us, you know, a considerable amount there. The fact that we, the comment that, you know, we spend like drunken sailors is, well, I know the term well. I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree, I don't agree with it. I don't think that we get everything right. I don't think that the Board of Finance or any board in this town gets everything right. I don't think that, you know, in the selectman's office, you get everything right every day. I don't get everything right every day I go to work. You know, we, we, we do volunteer for these positions and we, and we do, I, I think that we come here, I'd like to think anyway, at least I do, I'm here on those, on the meeting nights and subcommittee nights to do the best we can and, you know, and vote accordingly. Now. Do I, am I thrilled? I don't think that there's necessarily, well, I'll speak for myself. Am I thrilled with a, you know, six point four-two percent increase? No. Where we were at initially coming in, you know, with our flat budget is that four point three, four point five-ish percent based on the contractuals. And then there were some other things that were added on at the end. Everything from, you know, it was time for sprinkler whatevers to the increase again in special education, et cetera. And then the moving of the school resource officer from, from the town budget over ours was three point four, something like that, which got us to where we're at. It is a balancing act. And like I said, I don't, I, I don't think that any of us get it constantly all right. It's one of the reasons that, you know, you talk about your conscience. I, do I think that the track needs done? I absolutely feel it needs done, but I couldn't vote for that last week. I just thought that with the budget that we needed for the Board of Ed side, I couldn't support that, that much more going forward in a capital ask. That's Brian. We do have a constituency. You're absolutely right. And it's, and it's the folks that are in the particular party that we're, you know, political party that we're in, the students, the administration, all the folks on all the other boards, and it's all the regular, it's the townspeople too. So at the end of the day, all I'd say is, you know, vote for what you feel you need done. And, you know, I trust that that is what you felt in your heart. And I, I've got no harm, no foul. But to be criticized or, you know, I, I've stated publicly before that the us against them mentality that goes on amongst a couple of boards in this town is, it needs to stop. It, it's not helpful to anyone. And neither, you know, it's like the old saying, people live in glass houses. We shouldn't throw stones. So, anyway, vote your conscience and, thank you.
I'd like to say-
Can I check with other board members who haven't spoken yet?
I'm gonna keep mine very brief. Last time we met, last week, I said that I completely appreciated Andy's slideshow. I think that what he spelled out was what we have to do. Because six point four-two percent is very high, I wanted to have another week to reflect on what could possibly be cut, where we can change things if at all possible. So I did that. I spent a lot of time re-watching the meeting, rereading the notes. I looked at class size reports. I looked at monetary figures. And I'm concerned, my own experience in education, I figured out there's five of us on this board out of nine that are educators. And I think that says a lot. My own experience in education was I've taught virtually before. I taught in a private school before. I've taught in a public school before, and I've homeschooled my kids. So I've got the gamut. I understand the class size. From one kid to, I think I had twenty-eight at one time in a public school. I've been in school a long time ago and very recently. Either as a volunteer or as a teacher. Anyway, talking longer than I had planned to already. I don't, I'm not directing this to anyone either, and I think that's where we need to be careful as the board does not get to be personal here on the board. We lose sight of what we're here for. In my own experience, anyway, the reason I told you about that is because I think the problem that I'm having right now with the budget is the class size. Respectfully, there are some very small classes that were not mentioned. There are some very large classes. I said that last week as well. What we have going on at the, at the high school specifically, we're offering in many situations a private school opportunity with the numbers that we have in the classes. I'm uncomfortable with that. You can't do a whole lot about it. But there are scheduling changes that can be made. I do think we need to overhaul our schedule. I also think that there are places that we, unfortunately, I hate saying it, because I have a teacher in my family. I have two teachers in my family besides myself. I do think there are places that we can make additional cuts. And it hurts and it's painful and I don't like it. I've been around this town for fourteen, almost fifteen years, and I've been here when teachers got laid off and they're some of my kids' favorite teachers. And they didn't come back. They got a job somewhere else, like Sherri was saying. But I think in order for me to, with my conscience, vote about this budget, I have to vote no. Because I think there are places that we've let go too long and just we continue to let, to let it go. And I think it's time to make a change. So, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Dana.
Sherri.
I just wanna address the fact that it seemed the, the board against another board and, or a person against another person. I see that as sharing our feelings, sharing discourse. And just because a person has a different opinion or view doesn't mean it necessarily has to be a slap in the face. I have a problem with that. We have to come together as adults, listen to each other, share our sincere views or feelings, and they're gonna be different. And I don't consider that a battle. I consider that us helping each other understand the big picture. When I hear other views, it helps me understand the big picture. And I would hope that when I share views, it helps others see the big picture. That's what we need to do as a board. I respect each and every one of you sitting here. I would never think of slapping somebody in the face because they have a different view. I may not agree with you, but I would hope that you wouldn't be insulted or take offense because I happen to see something differently. We do have to work together. And we're gonna get a lot more good work done when we put our heads together, listen to each other, be patient with each other, and learn from each other. That's pretty much it for now.
Do the members have comments?
First of all, my apologies for being late. I did have a emergency at work that I could not leave my office, so my apologies. I did not listen to the public participation or any other comments. I was ready to vote last meeting. And I still hold, I still hold my trust in the people that we have put in place in the district. So I'm gonna stand with my vote and I would support the six point four-two.
I'm just wondering, oh, I'm sorry, Rachel. You wanna go first?
No, go.
I just was wondering if there were any specifics that anybody wanted to talk about that they, you know, wanted to decrease. I know that we're, their agenda item is to vote on the, on the proposal. But if we were to vote, if the vote were not to pass, then there has to be a solution or some items that are suggested from us as our due diligence specifically, not just, you know, we just need to decrease. So we absolutely need to talk about where that decrease might be or give Andy a direction to go back to his administrators and say, "This line item, this line item." That's how specific we need to be. So I'm just wondering if that is something anybody wants to bring up.
Before you go, Rachel, have your hand up. And I think, did I just see yours? Oh, sorry.
I do agree with you, and that's one of my items I do wanna address. But I also, I just wanna say a few things again in, in general. I think comparing people moving out of Connecticut to people moving out of Lebanon are two different things. Yes, it is very expensive to live in Connecticut right now, and that's why people are leaving. But we also have to look at how affordable it is to live in Lebanon. Our taxes are lower than most towns in the state. So that's all, I'm gonna, I can go on, but I also, I understand that it, that our taxes are gonna go up. My taxes are also gonna go up if we go ahead with this budget and it is approved by the Board of Finance and then by the town. But we're all talking about how we can't afford because of inflation. Well, the school's in the same position. Everything has gone up. Inflation has gone up. We can't expect to have a zero increase in our budget with what we see in inflation. Everything is gonna go up. So of course, the school needs more money to run. And it is. And as far as class sizes, I don't know, we can, we can, it's another conversation or another meeting that I think needs to happen. But I think instead of looking at individual class sizes, maybe we need to look at that teacher's, what is that teacher's schedule? They may have four or five classes with twenty, twenty-eight, thirty, and one class with, with five, that's an AP class. You know, it doesn't, if everyone has questions on that, maybe it's something that could be done in a subcommittee and evaluated further. But that's just looking at it the way I looked at it. I looked at it by teacher. And I don't, I don't think we can afford to lose any more of the teachers than we have. Also, the way the budget is now, if we were to reduce it, which is what I was gonna lead to basically what Sarah said as well, is we, where are we gonna reduce that? We need to look at each line item and, and I think we need to discuss. Everyone has had a week now to look at the budget. Where do they think it needs to be reduced? And if no one has any more input, then we can possibly vote on the way, on the budget now.
Sherri.
I agreed with, I just happen to agree with Danell's concern about the class sizes. And I also agree with Sarah saying that we need to be specific. And I agree with Rachel saying maybe we need to sit down. And I think you said something to that, to that effect too, Sarah, that we need to sit down. If, if that concern's out there, and it's a big one, maybe we do need to go back to the drawing board and find, to see if we can find a place. I'm certainly willing to do that.
Sarah.
I'm sorry. Just respectfully, this is what this meeting is for. You know, is to, is to give that information to Andy if we're not going to approve it. Which is why I was just asking for it. If anybody has any line items that they wanna see decreased, now would be the time.
Well, mine is only with those little classes. I, I voted affirmatively for pretty much everything that's come down the path, including graphic novels, except for one or two particular ones. And it, for me, it's absolutely, positively only the little tiny class sizes, mostly at the high school, and there are some at the middle school, especially when the elementary school can operate under classes or with classes of twenty. Our littlest, most fragile students can, you know, be expected to survive and thrive in a class of sixteen to twenty. Why can't our middle school students and high school students across the board, except for AP classes? And I remember you mentioned your son with being in an AP class, and I applaud that. I think it should be for English and for math. And hopefully, I, I wouldn't mind spending the money for social studies or science AP classes as well. But it's the idea of a teacher teaching five classes. And I would love to bring to the, we all got that pamphlet of the class sizes. I did not see a lot going on where this teacher taught twenty, thirty, and then, oops, had one class of three people. I saw lots of classes of tiny little classes across the board with the same teacher. And that's my concern. And yes, it hurts to cut teachers. And some of them would be the very best teachers and, and be so important to students. I had that. That's why I became a teacher. I had two teachers that inspired me. They were that great. So I understand that. But we, I, I don't think we can keep going on this course. And I'd like to knock down that spending like drunken sailors reputation that we do in fact have. It embarrasses me and I'm ashamed. And I'd like to turn that around. I would like to show the town that we have really put our heads together, worked together, and found the best solution, even though it was painful. Because obviously, what we brought to the table tonight is what we really, really want for our students collectively. That's what we want. That's our best offer. And it would be painful to have to take back. But all of us are in the position where, at home with our families, we would love to do this. We would love to buy that. We would love to go on a cruise. But we have to cut in our own personal budgets because of the inflation. And yes, we are dealing with inflation here too. But yes, we have to cut because of inflation as well. So like Sarah said, you need to find the lot, go line by line and find a place, if possible, to cut. And like Rachel said, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna require effort. It's gonna require talking things over. It's gonna require us respecting each other's feelings while we keep in mind the taxpayers, because without them, we're nothing.
So I'm a person that when I say something, I'm trying to always find a solution for it. So at home, I've spent hours thinking about it and wondering and looking. And I, I feel like some of this needs to happen in a subcommittee. Like it can't be here, because I have a lot of questions like, how does tenure work? How does a schedule work? Who makes the schedule? Like those questions are not for a full board meeting, I don't think. But those are things that administrators need to talk about in administrative meetings. And I think that would only come after the budget is passed or not. So to say what line item, like, I'm not gonna say M three needs to be, I, I don't, I don't know. I have lots of thoughts in my mind. But again, I don't have answers to a lot of the questions that I have in order to make those suggestions. I'm not on the Finance Committee either. But I think there, it's discussions in, maybe in subcommittees, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I, we have this proposed budget from the Subcommittee. So if it gets turned down, it no longer goes back to a Subcommittee because everybody wants to comment and to ask questions. So it does become another, would have to have a special board meeting next week.
Prior to the twenty-seventh, if I'm going to do the Finance-
It won't go back to the Subcommittee. It will remain at the full board.
I think Danell is, is right. There's, there's complex questions that, that do need asked going forward, certainly in the, in the, in the Subcommittee meetings. going forward, certainly in the, in the, in the subcommittee meetings. You know, I'd made a, I don't remember when I made the comment, but they, um, you know, personally, I'd like, I, I, while we're not a, a college, we're not a university, obviously. Most universities now won't run a course without a minimum of eight, in, in a eight students in a course, because that's their break even. And, uh, we're, you know, again, we're on a slightly different model. But again, that goes back to, and that would be my hope, that we could get closer to something like that than we would on the lower end. And there's exceptions to everything, of course. I, I think we all understand that. But I do believe that that's something that we'd have to do in subcommittee to better understand how schedules are drawn, again, you know, all those questions that, that Danell just, um, brought up. And I think that there's, um, you know, plenty of room for that thoughtful discussion going forward, is, but that's it, I'm done.
Can I ask a question? Andy, maybe you have the answer for this in the, um, budget document. There, in column C is what I'm looking at. There are, um, numbers highlighted in green. And then column D. Just remind me for the purposes of this meeting.
In that budget spreadsheet that you have, the green are what I consider to be the first tier of cuts that I thought needed to happen. And then I had provided the yellow, which was like, if we didn't think, within the green was enough, that we should go to that next tier, and then, uh, red was even provided. We did, just for everybody's memory, we went through all of the green cuts, and then into the yellow, and I believe the, the number was somewhere along the lines of like one point five million dollars or something like that that was cut in, in those efforts.
Okay. Oh, yeah, one point four, three seven.
Yeah. We didn't cut every single thing that was in the yellow, but we went significantly into that.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause that's what, that's the six FTEs.
All right, thank you for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure that, um, comparing it to the presentation and putting it in the spreadsheet, it just looks obviously a lot more detailed. So I just wanted to make sure that I was looking at the, the right numbers.
Is that the green, Andy, if I recall, was the initial, like, three percent that got it down, that you got? It was nine and change.
And then it's one point, now it's one point four, I believe.
But I remember when Andy first got it, it was.
It was nine?
Yeah.
Nine point eight. Oh, a nine percent increase.
Three and a half or four.
Yeah, so in the green cuts by themselves were roughly three point four-two percent, or eight hundred and fourteen thousand were cut before it was even presented to you.
Yeah, and then we went.
And then we went further into the yellow.
So if I'm looking at it correctly, H, column H, is the FTEs that were cut. So that is seven. I'm, I'm looking at line number fifteen. Middle school, special education, certified staff. We currently had, or we had seven, or, or we have cut seven?
No, that's total staffing numbers.
Total staffing, okay.
The proposal that I brought to the table at the last meeting included six FTE positions.
Gotcha. So that's one position there.
District one, yeah.
Six total, so six people.
Well.
Will not have.
Not people, because, not, not people. Because there were some that it's a proposed reduction. So instead of being full-time, they'd be point eight or point six. Uh, but then there are some full-time positions. But in total, from a budgetary standpoint, it will be the equivalent of six full-time equivalent positions. I, I just pulled up the yellow cuts after the green, or another four hundred and forty-nine thousand, which was an additional two percent. That's how much we went. So it wouldn't have been one point five million, it would have been one point three.
Okay.
Again, the motion on the floor is to approve the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, operating budget at the four point, six point four-two percent. Motion by Nicole, seconded by Sarah. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Are you taking notes?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can't take notes at the same time. We have Sarah, Nicole, Brian, Dawn W., Alexis, and Rachel. All those opposed? We have Dawn J., Danell, and Sheri. Motion passes. Thank you for taking notes. So next steps is for that to be presented. That is all that we have.
You mean what night you were presenting, yeah?
Thursday the twenty-seventh.
We will adjourn the meeting at five fifty-six.